We call the September 25, 2019 meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Can we have roll call determination of a quorum, please?
Chair Sattler.
President.
Vice Chair Borders.
Here.
Commissioner Doors.
Here.
Commissioner Aswin.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Commissioner Tingle.
Here.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Here.
A quorum's present.
Commissioner Tingle, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matters that is not specifically included in the agenda as an action item. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing none. Approval of minutes for the August 28 meeting? Anyone have any changes, or?
I have a couple changes.
Okay.
Commissioner Doors.
Doors.
First one is on the approval of the previous minutes. Commissioner Doors isn't listed on there. I approved. I aid. I eyed it. The next one is on the approval of item E2. Again, same, not on there. The next one is on approval of E3. Same, not on there.
You're invisible.
I know. And the next one is on E4. Same thing.
It's on all of them?
No.
Oh, okay.
Next one's E7. Same thing on E7, I think. E8. Same error, and that is all. Everything else looked just tip-top.
Commissioner.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes with the appropriate changes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Tingle, seconds. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any modification of agenda? Modification items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items. Public body may remove an item from agenda. The way discussed, we're going to do an item agenda at this time. Is there any items, Lee, that are going to be taken out of?
Yeah, it just pointed out item F3 under the Growth Management Commission agenda. There are no minutes attached today, so we're going to... We're not sure if you approved those before as Planning Commission, or how that works. We'll track those down and include them next time, but skip that item F3.
Thank you. Meeting items. E1, SUP-19-138 for possible action, discussion of possible action regarding a request for a special use permit to establish a bar use serving alcohol on property zoned retail commercial located within the Carson Mall Shopping Center at 1313 South Carson Street, APN 004-011-01.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant seeking to utilize up to 5,717 square feet of the Carson Mall for a bar. The Carson Mall is a multi-tenant shopping center that's owned retail commercial. It's bounded on the west by South Carson Street and on the east by Stewart Street. A bar is a conditional use in the retail commercial zoning district, so it's only allowed subject to a special use permit. As we discuss every time you look at a special use permit, you can only issue a special use permit upon making the seven required findings of fact in the affirmative. With the conditions of approval, and as outlined in the staff report, the staff was able to make those findings of fact in the affirmative. Having said that, we do want some clarification, clarifying language on conditions six and seven, and I have reviewed this clarifying language with the applicant. In terms of number six, rather than having the applicant post funds for improvements to meet ADA standards along roadways, that language will be struck, and instead, the applicant will be obligated to improve the driveway apron in the northeast corner of the parcel to meet the ADA standards, as well as to prepare the parking lot accessibility route upgrades where necessary to meet ADA standards. On number seven, the applicant has questions about the appraisal vis-a-vis the FEMA AO flood zone, so the staff has recommended an added sentence that... This is right out of the code essentially, that says if the estimated cost of the tenant improvement is less than 40% of the value of the structure based on the screening tools defined in the provisions of Municipal Code 12.09.020.72, then appraisal is not required. And the structure is referring to the entire mall building. So that's just a technical clarification. The applicant was concerned he'd need to have an appraisal for what will be a relatively small tenant improvement. So staff would ask, should you approve this, that you include these modifications to conditions six and seven? And again, we're recommending approval. Chad Christensen with the Carson Mall is present, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Do you have any questions for staff? Commissioner.
Is the applicant the mall or the bar owner?
I'll let Chad explain to you his relationship to the mall.
Chad Christensen, Regional Manager for Real Estate, the Carrington Company, which is the ownership for the mall.
Then I guess my question is, why is the mall making this application instead of the bar owner? I mean, what... I would think that if I was a leasing, then it would be my responsibility to do this. I wouldn't see it as a part of the mall's requirement. I was just curious as to the relationship, that's all.
It was in coordination with the leasing that as we went through and gathered additional information for the SUP process, we agreed to go ahead and then help submit the process.
Commissioner Borders, Lee Plamow, Community Development Director. I'd also just add that special use permits do stay with the property, so, you know, we do want property owners certainly to be able... It's not completely unusual that even if it's not this tenant, it may be some other tenant under these conditions.
Well, and in this case, then the mall is on the hook for this improvement to the street regardless of who eventually ends up in there, so...
That's correct, yes.
You know, it just seemed funny to me to begin with, and I just...
Further clarification then, once this is approved, does that approve it for any place in the mall, or just for this particular?
The conditions of approval call out that it has to be consistent with the application that's before you, so anything they've represented in the application, it needs to be consistent with that.
Thank you for that. Other questions for staff, or for the applicant? Is there anything else you would like to add, sir, to that? Oh, first of all, the nine conditions of approval, with the changes, you're good with those, sir?
Yes. They've been explained to me today, and we're good with those.
Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Public comment on this item. At this time, we'll take any public comment if there's any to be made on this particular item. Otherwise, we'll bring it back to the Commission for further discussion or emotion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Borders.
I move that we approve SUP 19-138 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report as modified on revisions six and seven.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Commissioner Doors, seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now let the fun begin.
Next item, E2, TPUD-19-142 for possible action, discussion of possible action regarding tentative commercial plan unit development that would create 227 RV lots for sale on property zoned tourist commercial located at 1400 Old Hot Springs Road, APN 008-123-40.
Thank you, Heather Ferris, Associate Planner, for the record. As I'm sure you all recall, in January of this year, the Planning Commission approved a special use permit for an RV park with 277 RV spaces and amenities with a maximum stay of 180 days on the subject parcel. Neighboring property owners appealed the Planning Commission's approval, and at its April 4 meeting, the Board of Supervisors upheld the Planning Commission's approval with the addition of a condition clarifying the 180-day stay maxima. The applicant is now requesting approval of a tentative commercial planned unit development for an RV resort with 227 individual RV space lots for sale and common area parcels with open space and amenities. As proposed, RV space lots may also be rented when the owners are not utilizing them. In general, a planned unit development is similar to an overlay zone. Uses allowed in the commercial and industrial planned unit developments are limited to permitted uses within the underlying zoning district. A recreational vehicle park is in allowed use in the tourist commercial zoning district with a maximum stay of 30 days, subject to completion of a major project review, or 180 days, subject to approval of a special use permit. In addition, the PUD requirements... In addition to the PUD requirements, all of the supplemental standards for RV parks must be met unless a different standard is set by the PUD. The development is well under the density allowed per the supplemental standards for the RV park as outlined in 18.09.050, which allows for a maximum of 30 RV spaces per acre. The applicant is proposing a density of 5.88 spaces or lots per acre. Section 17.09.0404G of the Municipal Code allows for an applicant to request modifications to Carson City's land use regulations, which would otherwise be applicable to the subject property. And there's a few that the applicant is requesting. They're not seeking to modify the allowable land uses, but they are seeking, one, to reduce the lot size from the 6,000-square-foot minimum that is permitted in the tourist commercial district to 3,275 square feet would be the smallest RV lot. Parking is another request. They're not really reducing the standard. Parking requirements for RV parks are not specifically listed in Division 2 of the development standards. 18.09.050 does outline the required parking for RV parks, which is one vehicle or recreational vehicle per RV space, but it does not address any additional guest spaces or additional parking. So the applicant is proposing two additional... Two vehicle parking spaces per RV lot, so it would allow for the parking of one RV, the RV tow vehicle, and then one guest vehicle. Additionally, there would be 35 parking spaces near the clubhouse and welcome center, which is in the center of the development. And the final reduction that they're looking for is on restrooms and showers. So as proposed, all recreational vehicles permitted within the development would include a full restroom, bathroom facilities, as well as a shower. And the applicant is requesting a reduction in the number of restrooms and showers provided throughout the resort. The accessory buildings, including the clubhouse, sales office, cafe, would all have restrooms, and then shower facilities would also be included within the clubhouse. And the intent would be for the primary bathroom and shower facilities to be the RVs themselves. The RV lot owners and/or paying guests would be limited to 180 days. An owners' association or similar entity would be established to maintain all of the common areas and amenities. Amenities would include a sales office, gatehouse, clubhouse with restroom and laundry facilities, maintenance building, pool, tennis court, pickleball court, cafe, a nine-hole putting golf course, and open space. The RV lots would be able to be improved by the individual owners, including landscaping and the ability to construct small accessory structures, limited to outdoor kitchens with grills, fireplace or fire ring, and a coach house, which the applicant is requesting be limited to a maximum of 12 feet by 16 feet in size to include a restroom, washer dryer, wet bar, and/or seating area. Each RV space lot will have full water and sewer and electric service. The applicant is proposing development in two phases. Each phase will include the construction of necessary infrastructure, and Phase 1 would include all of the buildings and amenities, as well as 132 RV lots. Phase 2 would include the final 95 RV lots. Per the provisions of 17.09.100, 30% of the gross area of the site must be set aside for open space. In total, the development requires 11.58 acres of open space. So there's just over nine acres of common open space improved with recreational amenities, as well as open areas with landscaping throughout the development. And then there's additional open space with each individual lot, and that does meet the requirements outlined in the code. As with a special use permit, primary access is proposed from Old Hot Springs Road with an emergency secondary access to the west connecting to Holly Way. Staff has received two comment letters from property owners in the area, both opposed to the project, and citing concerns with RVs being used as permanent residence, additional permanent structures such as decks and sheds, and safety with regard to the proximity to the airport. Staff has included conditions to address limiting the stays and limiting the types of structures that can be built on each lot. Additionally, the airport has reviewed the project, and staff has incorporated all of their requested conditions of approval. The Planning Commission reviews requests for tentative PUDs and makes recommendations to the Board of Supervisors based on the ability to make the findings of fact identified in 17.07 and 17.09 in the affirmative. Staff was able to make all findings and is recommending approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. Additionally, staff has provided a memo outlining recommended modifications to six conditions of approval, and you should have that in front of you. And most of these modifications are a result of a meeting with the applicant where they were seeking clarification to these conditions. Condition 17 would be modified, deleting the existing language and adding language to clarify that a private owners' association or similar entity will be formed to maintain all common areas, open space, amenities, fences and vegetative screening, and onsite sewer, water, and storm drain facilities. Additionally, a deed restricted would put property owners on notice that in the event the association ceases to exist or becomes inactive, the city will have the ability to take over maintenance via a maintenance district. Condition 22 would be modified to specify the specific turning movements at each of the three intersections indicated in the condition. Condition 28 would be modified, clarifying that the fences along the northern and western project boundaries are required to be in place with Phase 1, and the existing fence along the eastern boundary must remain until replaced with Phase 2 of the project. Condition 33 would be modified to clarify that the landscape buffer at the rear of the lots would be included with the landscape plans and not the landscaping area between the lots. Condition 40 would be modified, deleting the last sentence as the requirement for maintenance of these utilities would be included in the modified Condition 17. Condition 49 would be modified to clarify that all personal property must be removed unless stored in a coach house. Additionally, the applicant's traffic engineers provided additional data, which shows that the stop sign warrant analysis is not recommended... Excuse me, is not required at the intersection of Old Hot Springs Road and Research Way, and therefore, staff is recommending deletion of Condition 23. So with that, I'm available for questions. Rachel Kreider with RCI is here on behalf of the applicant and has a brief presentation as well.
Heather, Condition 49, it mentions that they have to vacate. Who's in charge of enforcing that, or seeing if that's done? Is that something they will do, or is that... They'll put something on our staff?
So it would be something that we would do in the event that we received complaints, just as with any other RV park.
That's how that works now?
Yes.
And I'm taking all of these lots will be for sale. There won't be anywhere you can just pull in and stay a few nights and leave, or is it going to be mixed?
I believe they're for sale, but it would be limited to 180 days that the individual owner can stay, and then the remaining six months of the year, it would be open for rent as well.
Questions for staff, Commissioner Doors?
So just to clarify, because I thought I heard you say to the first question there that they would also have HOA requirements where they would also police the 180-day maximum themselves?
They would have HOA requirements as well, yes.
So when if someone owns the pieces of property and decides to rent them out, is there a minimum? Because I mean, there was a minimum, I believe, or I think we talked about like a week minimum or something. Can they rent these out for a day or two? I mean, can someone come for any period of time they're allowed to rent up to 180 days?
That's correct. Up to 180 days.
Okay, thank you.
So does that rental go to the property owner, or does it go to the park?
Goes to the association. I have several questions, but Heather, let's start with number six, which is one of my pet peeves that I know we're working on. I dislike saying AT&amp;T Cable Vision. Why don't we say what it is and not give it a name? You know, it's just... Right now, it may be AT&amp;T Cable Vision. Tomorrow, it may not be.
Or TV providers.
Or, you know, digital connections, cable, whatever you want to do. There ought to be a more generic name we can use instead of identifying some particular provider.
I agree. That's directly out of the code.
I understand. That's what we're working on.
Correct.
Okay.
Bring that to the meeting.
Yeah. Number 12, the final map, how does the final map and Phase 2 coincide? And what I'm getting at is that the plans show that the golf course is Phase 2, and we have stated in several places in here that all the amenities will be complete. And according to this, when like... Or in the other documents we have, when 57 of the lots are sold.
I believe there also is a golf course located in the center as well, and maybe Rachel can clarify that for me.
Right. Rachel Kreider, Resource Concepts. The primary putting green course is behind the clubhouse amenity area in the center, so that's part of Phase 1.
What's the golf course and the green belt?
The... That area may or may not be additional putting greens. It's kind of probably going to be based on how busy they are for Phase 1 and see if that's an amenity they want to provide, or if they want to do it just as more of a natural...
Is it going to be grass?
Most likely not. The putting green areas, yes, but the landscape areas other than that will be consistent with water efficient...
So that green belt down there may or may not be grass?
Right. That's correct.
Will it be irrigated?
Yes.
Okay. So if according to our new item, number 17, the association decides they don't want to do anything more with the groundskeeping, then the city will take it over, including all the green areas, all the sewers, all the water meters, and everything else? True?
So maybe Lee can help shed a little bit of light on this as well, but my understanding is that we have had several projects, PUDs and other subdivision maps with common area go forward to the board. The board is concerned with essentially putting the property owners on notice that the city can take over maintenance should the HOA essentially go defunct. And this is how we have addressed it in several other projects.
I understand what you're saying, but it just appears to me that that's an out that we give the developer to basically walk away from the project if he chooses to and leaves the city stuck with all the maintenance. Are there going to be individual water meters at each site?
No, this is going to be master metered.
Okay. But in any case, the infrastructure of the water meters and the sewer and the electric, which are going to be all underground, if we get to the point where the city takes it over, then the city's going to, in essence, own an RV park. And I don't necessarily know that's what we want to do, but that... Okay, I got that. Another question. Items number 30 and 31 talk about trash enclosures and birds and all that kind of stuff. There is no place on this plan for a trash enclosure.
So the trash would be located in the maintenance area in what would be the northwest corner, the upper right-hand corner on the screen. That's the maintenance area.
Everybody has to carry their trash over there?
No. The plan is for the management to pick up trash at each individual lot and haul the trash to the maintenance area.
Is there a 24-hour desk?
24-hour desk?
Yeah.
I believe so. There is 24-hour staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I was a member of the association, but I chose not to rent my apartment, I still have to pay for that staff, correctly? Correct?
That's correct. It would be like any HOA or common...
Not necessarily if it has a different rental operation. I'm saying if I...
And I can get to that a little bit in my presentation.
Okay.
And that might clarify that a little bit.
What I'm getting to is if there is a site manager or a host there, which is typically someone who would host the place at less rent or no rent, and they have 180-day requirement, then they're going to be going through host couples every six months?
It's not like a traditional campground where there would be a host.
I'm not talking about a campground. I'm talking about an RV park.
Right.
Just like this.
Right. So there's not a manager residence.
Okay.
Yeah. So there would be security staff that would be there overnight, and then there would be other staff that would do the rentals and that during the day, just like any other RV resort where someone comes in and checks in and then proceeds to their site.
Okay, so if I come in at 8:00 at night, then the security guy's going to send me to my site?
Right. And I can't speak exactly to the hours that there would be office staff.
That's all right. You answered the question. I got it. That's it for now.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Aswin?
Just picking you and stuff, but what's the difference between Condition 3 and Condition 25, and Condition 4 and Condition 15? It looks to me like 4 could be eliminated and replace, or, I'm sorry.
You're correct, I think 3 and 4 could be eliminated, or?
Or 15 and 25.
Correct.
The difference, so 3 is, 3 is a standard condition about not grading until it's time for development so that to minimize dust, that's a standard condition of approval. I think 25 actually is not the same and relates to, it's engineering condition that grading permits must be approved with the respective site improvements. So I think they kind of say the same thing, sure. Got it.
On the revised Condition 17, if the city were to take over the maintenance, how would any deferred maintenance be, how would the cost of that be recovered by the city?
Again, Lee Plummel, the, how is the question, how would the cost recover for deferred maintenance? I mean, this is a situation that hasn't come up yet where the city's had to take over another one. Schultz Ranch operates as a landscape maintenance district now, the common areas there that are open, that are open to the public. It's just another mechanism to pay for it, the members there are assessed, the city does bear a percentage of the share of the cost of maintenance under that scenario. So I think, you know, I mean, what the condition says is they would need to enter into an agreement with the city, so I think those kind of details are still to be worked out between them and the Board of Supervisors for a landscape maintenance district agreement if that's needed. So I don't know how to answer the question, you know, the deferred maintenance in particular, they'd have to deal with that at the time.
Well, just so, when you do discuss that agreement, to be aware that, you know, you've got to have stuff underground here that's going to cost more than, you know, just going in and replacing some plants.
The, right, and the maintenance, the maintenance cost, this is, nobody from Parks and Rec is here, they would have more information, but I believe it's a full amortization of the infrastructure as well. It's like, it's not just the cost of paying the lawnmower to go out every week, it's an anticipated complete cost of maintenance, including irrigation repair and those types of things, is what I believe the cost is that gets paid by the, that the residents pay their share of it.
Right, I guess my concern is more the water and sewer stuff that's underground, that, you know, if 10 years from now, there are some, you know, unresolved issues with the water and sewer system, and the homeowners' association goes belly up, you know, who's on the hook for paying for all of that?
Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Preston has a comment on that. Commissioner Westman, is that okay?
Hi, Terry Preston, for the record. My question is, okay, my question is, is the HOA, is it under 116 like a homeowners' association? Or is it under a business park? Or is it under a mobile home park? Because they all have different NRSs, and so the association would be managed different ways depending on what this is identified, because this is kind of a one-off and we don't have it. So I'm trying to figure out, because usually with the HOAs, they actually are in statute that shows how they're handled, mobile home parks in statute, how they're handled with the NRS. This right here is kind of, like you said, a one-off, so where are we designating this to be?
You know, that may be, I don't have the answer to that question. That might be something that Randall can answer. So this is Randall Henderson, he's here with this project as well. He has extensive experience, has developed 32 of these sorts of developments throughout the country in 12 states that include over 12,000 RV spaces. So I'd like to defer to him on this question.
It says it's under NRS 116.
According to their draft covenants, it's NRS 116.
On that, I'd like to have some clarification, because NRS 116 typically deals with condominiums and actually stick-built structures, and that's what, that's what my concern is. Now, have you done these kind of develops in the state of Nevada?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
In Las Vegas.
Okay.
401 sites.
Okay, and did it go under 116? Is that how it's being managed?
I apologize, I don't know the exact criteria. We resoned a condominium RV resort, and you've asked a lot of valid questions that I would like to attempt to answer. Let me apologize and say that we've been doing this for 30 years. I've never gone anywhere where anyone had ever dealt a lot with condominium RV resorts. It's not an unusual situation to deal with and understand, but you've asked some questions that I think I can answer for you, because we've done 30-plus resorts, 12,000 sites, we've done them, and the way I got involved here, by the way, was your gentleman who owns this property, Roger Shaheen, had owned lots at numerous of our properties with his motorhome, and after he got you, went through all the processes and got you approved, he asked me if I would come out and look with him and take a look at what I thought about it, and I did, and I said, I'll be honest with you, I think you could do well as a rental facility. You've got so much demand for housing, basic housing for the labor market plus the RV market, but I'll be honest with you, I think you'd be underutilizing the property. I think you've got one of the best locations left in the country, and I've done, we've done the best ones so far in the country. And I said, what you're looking at, I understand, is Carson City, and I apologize, but I said, you're very close to Reno, you're very close to South Lake Tahoe, you own 580, you don't know it, but you're perfect for a guy pulling a trailer or driving a motorhome with a car behind it. They can't wait to get off the highway, park, disconnect, and go and visit their surrounding areas. You've asked a lot of questions legitimate about what would happen if you fail. Well, I'm not saying you can't fail, we've done, we've done the best ones in the country, we've done 30-something, and we've succeeded so far on all of them, but we've always had a fallback. If you don't make your so-called entrepreneurial profit in selling lots, if you're in a good location, you build a nice facility, and you manage it properly and advertise it and promote it, you can do a great job in rental. It just means that you're going to take longer to recapture your investment. We have never had a failure, and I'm not saying you, we can't, everybody can, but we do have a backup and a safety net. We don't just go in with the idea, we got to sell every one of them and we're not going to succeed. We do sell, and we've sold out every one we've ever built. But the reality is, we went, and we, when you go into a market where you have nice amenities, we call ourselves a destination resort. You have three types. You have the overnighters along the highway, you have the ones where you go park next to a casino, because that's kind of a parking lot, a holding pen, and then you have what we call a destination resort where the burden is on you to put your amenities there for people to come and enjoy themselves. You ask a question about management. We do have a full-time manager. They don't live on-site, but you have their number and they can be there in five minutes. So we're never without a manager. We oftentimes have, at the gate, a gatehouse with 24-hour security, so we're covered in spades with management. I heard a few other legitimate questions, and I would just say this, you'd be kind enough to repeat them, because if, I don't want to leave something unsaid, you mentioned about mobile home, we have only three types of equipment that we will permit at the resort. And I say that not out of disrespect for the whole, we drove all around Tahoe today and looked at the camping, and we drove up and looked at the campgrounds, KOA and the Good Sam off of 80, Boomtown, and also Gold Rush. We basically, they're served pretty well. Surprisingly, the larger motorhome that requires a little more electrical, a larger fifth-wheel, it's not served, even up at Tahoe where you can't put anything but the pavement and you've got to park on the pine needles. That's a great place to visit in your car, but it's not a fun place to take your RV around that road and try to find a place to stay. So you're a great destination to branch out from, and whether you want to go to Virginia City, whether you want to go over down to South Lake Tahoe, we tried to time it, you can be to all those facilities in less than 30 minutes. That is with very few traffic signals. But we only permit Class A motorhomes, more than 34 feet, not more than 10 years old. Fifth-wheels, same way, 34, the minimum that you could have is 34 feet, and we have kind of had to recognize what they call super Class Cs. They've gotten right up there on par with the so-called Class As, 34 or longer. So we don't, we don't permit extended, you ask about the 180 days, and everyone asks us, my goodness, is that going to kill everything? Will you be able to sell your lot? And no, our owners, renters are more like second homeowners. They don't buy a second home with the idea of living there year-round. So our typical season would probably be June, July, and August. Everybody talks about the skin, I think that's wonderful, but unfortunately, RVs aren't made to bring up in the wintertime, insulation, all kind of conditions, but, and we tried that in Colorado, that we looked at a property, it doesn't work. I'll stop, I didn't come here to make a pitch, if I can answer any questions, I'd certainly be willing to do it.
First thing, sir, can we get your name again for the record?
It's Randall Henderson. My history, I built the outdoor resorts across the country. I'm chairman and president, we've done a bunch of them for 30 years, and yeah, we started off with Winnebago's 25, 19 feet, and Airstreams and little trailers, and we tried to grow with the market, grow with the industry, and we've tried to provide a niche where other people aren't providing it.
I think how we'll proceed is we'll probably finish questions for staff, then have you do your presentation, we can refer back, or you can refer back to him for further questions. Is that?
Yep, that sounds perfect.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tingle, is this for staff or?
This is a question for staff. On the trip generation, 788 trips, weekday trips, does that include the staff from the Division of Welfare and Supportive Services, the Department of Taxation, the Division of Parole and Probation, all of the, and, and dot, all of those state employees that use Research Way and Hot Springs, Old Hot Springs Road to get to and from their work locations? So does that, does those trip numbers include all of those employees that are in and out of there?
Is that a question for B or the staff? I thought.
This is Stephen with Development and Engineering. Could you tell me where that, in the report, that number's, is that?
It's on, it was page seven of the Sierra Skies RV Resort Traffic Analysis. So apparently, they did their own traffic analysis, and this is what the number was. Has anybody from the city done a similar traffic analysis about the traffic, and not to mention the FedEx?
So to, a couple things, so to answer your first question, this is only the subject property, and then they look at the background traffic and add these trips to the background traffic. They do a distribution, they say we, we think this percentage of the traffic is going to go south to college, this percentage is going to go out to Go-Ni. So staff reviews that trip distribution and how that's applied to the existing traffic volumes. As far as previous studies, there was a study done with the special use permit, staff actually asked them to update it with this tentative map because we disagreed with the trip generation that they had originally provided, it was missed at that time. And then when they came back, we said, well, you need to get the right trip generation, it's quite a bit higher than what it was before.
Yeah.
Sorry, did I miss part of the question?
Would you turn his mic off, please, for now? Thank you.
Good evening, Lucia Maloney, Transportation Manager. When we, just to add on to what Stephen said, when we reviewed the traffic study, we did look at, compare that background traffic volumes to our regional travel demand model, and the estimates were roughly equivalent to what we see with our model.
And what do you consider background traffic?
That's, it's a good question. It's just essentially existing traffic for the model year, so we model those trips for 2019, and so it's, you know, it's, but it's a regional model, so it's a rough estimate of background traffic, of existing traffic.
So that would cover your trips to the DMV or FedEx and all that, would be in that traffic normally because it occurred the year before?
That's correct.
Okay, so just to clarify, when you do these studies, do you, do you put the traffic control devices up and you count how many people, you know, how many cars drive across that little monitoring spike line, and so that's how you determine the number of trips that are average standard during the day, during the week?
So generally, best practice is you would, you would deploy, a traffic engineering firm would deploy folks to go out there and count turning movements, to develop those assumptions that Stephen was talking about, about how many trips are turning, you know, right onto, to go towards college, how many are left up, up Go-Ni, and make those assumptions to build their traffic impact studies. It is known and acknowledged that we do get inconsistencies when staff receive traffic impact reports that are prepared from various engineering firms. That's why the Board of Supervisors approved it to add a traffic engineer to our staff. We're currently recruiting for that now with the intention of standardizing these and starting to take them in-house so that you all get standard traffic impact studies in the future. But for now, when we do get them in, staff review them, compare them to our regional model and say, yes, this makes sense, yes, this is reasonably consistent, and in this instance, the background traffic was.
Just to add on to that, they stayed in their report, the date, or the timeframe when they did those counts was in August of 2019.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Preston?
I'm going to make a suggestion, I'm going to make a suggestion that, I don't know who wrote your CCNRs, but one of the things that I do have is I have three different licenses, my real estate license, my property management license, and my CAM license for common area management, and for community association management, and these are not for an RV park. And I'm going to say this because they refer back to a lot of mortgage lending things for home-specific. They're referring things to the 116, which I do not believe that this is the 116. So that's one thing I would like to have, is I'd like to have these CCNRs actually be specific to this, because I don't think that you intend to have a community association manager managing this that would also have to have another license doing possibly mobile home manufacturing. So in the state of Nevada, it's rather encumbering, depending on the different types of property. The other thing is that there's a lot of reference in this to like stick-built mortgages. So if you had your legal people look at that, it's going to be cleaner. Okay, so I did want to make that, that thing on there. My concern, I mean, a couple of things, is that when we originally approved this, they were for self-contained units that were to have a dump station, and there was going to be additional facilities for washers and for showers and this type of thing with the understanding that people would be in those. Now they've become self-contained units, they're not, they're no longer self-contained units. They're going to be going into the, using the master meter for water and sewer. My question to Steve is how is that going to affect? My question to Steve is how is that going to affect that sewer line on College Parkway? Because is that, when is it going to be affected on this?
Stephen with Development Engineering. So because the new design actually decreases in units, we're anticipating a decrease in the, the impact with this project compared to the previously approved project. We're assuming similar domestic and sewer water usage from one project to the next per unit. But since there's a decrease in units, we're expecting that decrease.
I think that's pretty much all I have right now.
So if somebody comes in for two or three days or whatever, and they're going to bring their unit in, they'll hook up to water and sewer or whatever, even if it's just for like two days and then because when they rent despite, I guess?
Right, so each, each lot would have water, sewer and electric hookup. And then there would be those additional amenities for showers and restrooms. They'd just be reduced from what the requirement is in eighteen point oh nine.
So are these hookups all universal that, you know, my motor home's going to hook up to the same connector that's in that unit that's bought and owned by somebody else?
I would defer to the applicant, but in my experience with RVs, yeah, that's, that's pretty universal.
Any other, Commissioner Preston?
Yeah, one other question I had is in the coach house that you were talking about, you said that they would have the possibility of adding a washer in the coach house. So in the event that somebody wanted a, a washer in there, that would again go into the masters, the master centralized utilities, as would a wet bar if I decided I want to have a wet bar and a, and a washing machine in my coach house. So it wouldn't be just my motor home with the one restroom and my motor home with the kitchen. So we'd be adding additional fixtureization is my question.
I, I can address that a little bit in my presentation. I will address that too. Yeah.
You know, we're, we're jumping all over here. Yeah, hang on just a sec. We'll call on you, sir, when we, when we need your, your information. Thank you. We keep going from staff. Are we ready to go and let her give her presentation? Excuse me, instead of forty-nine, there's forty-seven conditions of approval if we combine the other two with the changes. Are you amenable with all those?
There are two conditions of approval that we wanted to discuss further.
Okay.
And I've spoken with Heather about that previously.
Okay. We can do that, you know. Thank you.
Okay. So to start it off, you know, I, we appreciate the opportunity to go through some of this information. Some of it's already come up, some of it we've already answered, and a lot of it is going to be redundant with what Heather has presented. But just as a little overview, we're going to talk about the existing site, the previous proposed development, which has come up, not surprisingly, the current proposed development, and then also what, some specifics about what exactly the RV ownership model is, including some of the things about what would be allowed and what wouldn't be allowed on those. So this is just an overview of the site. North is up in this view. It's a over thirty-eight acre property. It's located north of Old Hot Springs Road between College Parkway and Arrowhead Drive. It's currently vacant and has been vacant. It's covered in fill. The zoning is the tourist commercial in which RV Park isn't allowed use. The surrounding uses, you can see there, this is a pretty up-to-date aerial photo. So to the north and east is vacant land. To the south is partially vacant and then partially commercially developed. So that's the Carson Hot Springs immediately to the south and the Sassafras and the brewery there. And then to the west, of course, is the one acre residential properties, approximately one acre residential properties. There is existing drainage that comes to this property from the north, off-site drainage. It currently flows in an unimproved drainage channel along the west boundary of the property. And then we've got marked there also the primary access for the project off of Old Hot Springs Road. You can see it's through that little neck of property that meets the roadway. And then we've got marked the emergency access, which is on Holly Way there. Also to note, the, the driveway access into the property is partially constructed at this time with pavement and utilities. So just a brief reminder of the previous development permits for this property, we did go through the NPR process last year for two hundred and seventy-five dot lot, thirty-day maximum stay rental RV resort. So that's just typical RV resort is allowed without special use permit in this zone. And then we came back in December for a special use permit for the extended stay, which I think you all remember. It was approved and then the Board of Supervisors upheld the approval on appeal. So just a little background and now we'll shift to what the proposed resort is. It's an ownership model, which we've discussed a little bit, targeting those Class A motor coaches and the large fifth-wheel trailers. I know Randall mentioned also those large conversions. Overall, it's a very low density for an RV development, two hundred and twenty-seven spaces, which sounds like a lot, but that's five point eight eight spaces per acre, which is well below the thirty spaces per acre maximum for RV parks. The lots are individually owned. They're separate properties. It can be owned and improved based on the owner's preference with definitely some restrictions in there. Some of those improvements could be things like landscaping, patios, outdoor fireplaces, outdoor kitchen and the coach house, which we talked about a little bit. And we'll talk a little bit, probably more about that on the next slide. But the coach house just is sort of a, I know there's some question about that. It's a twelve-foot by sixteen-foot maximum, so under two hundred square feet. Single-story. It can include a restroom, a wet bar, a washer dryer and a seating area. It's important to note that it cannot include any sleeping areas and it cannot be occupied when an RV is not on the site. So this is something that is only in accessory use when it's being used with motor coach present. And to answer some of the question about washer dryer units, the restroom, yes, there would be additional fixtures. However, I think there's a real important clarification in the use of those. You know, a little restroom in that, it would be akin to, you know, having a powder bathroom for your guests at your house, rather than having them walk through your bedroom to use your restroom. So the use isn't going to be high. It's, all of those uses are going to be primarily if you're out there entertaining, you have guests over, you might use a wet bar and a restroom, but that's not going to be the primary use. Most of the time, folks are going to be inside their motor coaches and would use those fixtures there. The washer and dryer, I don't own one of these large RVs, but I understand many of them actually have a small stacked washer and dryer in them already. So that's just a possible use. It's not probably a very likely use. Also, an important note that any of those improvements would be subject to the appropriate building permits at that time. And I'll talk a little bit later about what's included in initial development and what would be individual lot owner improvements. Also, and I know it's already come up already, is the association. There would be an association that has CCNRs and I appreciate the comments regarding the CCNRs. They are draft CCNRs and, and we appreciate your comments. They will, one of the conditions of approval is to work with the district attorney's office and make sure that those are approved by the district attorney's office before the final map. Also, any proposed improvements would be subject to Architectural Review Committee review before they went to any building permits as well. Also, some of the common amenities include what Heather already went over. We've got the sales office and the gatehouse, clubhouse, the cafe is for just onsite guests only, the maintenance building, pool, tennis court, pickleball court, those amenities there. This is the overview of the property, which is the same, I believe, as what Heather had previously. Just a couple of highlights, we've got the entrance from Old Hot Springs Road, which on this view is to the left. There's no secondary access for owners and guests. The access from Holly Way is for emergency vehicles. The amenity area includes clubhouse, pool, pickleball court, tennis ball court, the putting greens and a cafe. The maintenance area, which is in the upper right-hand corner, which corresponds to the northwest corner, is where trash collection occurs. And like was mentioned previously, staff comes around and collects garbage at least once daily and takes it to that central location. The onsite drainage detention basins would be developed in phase one or two as applicable. And those are going to be determined based on the technical drainage study that go along with the improvement plans that'll be done. The roads will be paved with asphalt and have curb and gutter. Each individual lot will be improved partially as part of the initial construction. I'll get to that later. The entrance area has the multiple lanes for staging. The utilities throughout are water, sewer, electric, gas, all connect to existing infrastructure. Water sewer is connected to municipal water and sewer, however, the infrastructure itself will be private. The hydrants, the hydrant line and the potable water lines are all private and master-metered for the development with the appropriate backflow protection. The drainage channel, the existing drainage channel that runs along the west boundary of the property will be improved with this property as well as a drainage easement recorded for that portion and an access road. And that is with coordination with Carson City Public Works for that. And then for screening, on the south side, which is the left on this view, would be a six-foot block wall. The west side would be adjacent to the residential area, would be either a six-foot block wall or a side obscuring fence. The north side, chain link and the east side, chain link. And as mentioned earlier, there is an existing chain link fence along that east side, which will remain in place until they go to develop phase two. Phase one includes one hundred and thirty-two RV spaces as well as those amenities shown within phase one. And that does include that putting green area. Phase two includes an additional ninety-five lots and open space and then the appropriate infrastructure that goes with that. That green space that you see, it may just be landscaping or it may be putting green areas. That's going to be kind of determined based on the demand. The typical lot size is going to be forty feet wide by ninety feet long. There are larger lots and the corner lots, as well as the area on the east side there, which is on the, the bottom of this view. Those are longer lots as well. So this is an example of just a typical way that someone might finish out their lot. Each individual lot will include with initial development, all of the utilities for the lot, the pad for the lot, which will be paver or another hard surface, and then the rear vegetative screening. So that all would be developed as well as all of the roads, all the curbing, all the utilities for that phase. As part of individual improvements, as the lot owners would like to do later on, they can do the additional side lot screening for the rear thirty feet of the lot or so. They can put in patios, landscaping, vegetation, as mentioned, and then also structures, as we discussed earlier, the outdoor kitchen, outdoor fireplace, and then possibly the coach house. So these are just some sample views of architectural renderings for the site. We've got on the upper left, the gatehouse and the clubhouse entering the development. We've got some of the amenities, the pickleball court. We've got the putting greens and the clubhouse amenities overview. And this is just to get an idea for the planned appearance. And I mentioned that partly because some of the examples that we have of existing developments like this, they all seem to feature palm trees. And we realize that's not going to be the character here. You know, we're going to have pine trees and other vegetation that will survive. But these, these particular resorts are often in, these ones, I think the pictures are from Las Vegas and near Palm Springs area, so they do have that palm tree appearance. But these are just some examples of the ownership RV resorts that have been in other locations. As Randall mentioned, there is one that he developed in Las Vegas. It's a larger one than what we're proposing here. Also, there, as, as he mentioned as well, there are a number of these all throughout the country, but there are none in this area. So it is a unique opportunity and we do expect that to be reflected in the demand that we see. Also, we do expect it to be primarily a destination resort and not, you know, an accessory to another use that's nearby or passing through. Oftentimes, and it is intended that this would have as part of an amen, as part of the amenities that the owners would enjoy, would be things like event planning, where they can, you know, get a minibus and take an excursion to Virginia City or up to the lake or something like that. So the ownership model development, just a few notes on that. We did meet with planning prior to putting this together to determine what is the most appropriate way to approach this development. And the planned unit development is what we came up with on that because there's, you know, it's not a residential subdivision. It is still technically a subdivision of land. So that's where we came to the planned unit development for this. So a little bit about what the ownership model is not. It's not a traditional RV park. So for the most part, and I'll get to it in a minute, people aren't, it's not going to be a real high turnover in terms of someone coming in every two days for all of the lots. It's also not full-time residency. Hundred and eighty-day maximum stay is included in the conditions of approval. It will be included in the CCNRs as well. There are no residential structure improvements allowed and no direct school or workforce impact. So there aren't going to be students living there that are going to be attending schools. We do not anticipate anyone there is going to be going out into the workforce because it's like a second home. So the typical owners, like we mentioned, they use this site like they would a vacation home or a second home. They would come typically for sixteen to ninety days during the summer season. Many also, we expect, also own lots in other places. So maybe they own a lot in Indio, California or in Arizona. They don't want to be there during the summer, so they're looking for another location where they can spend, you know, in opposite season time. So this is a, a perfect opportunity for that here where people can come spend time during the summer. And then to address the rental use, because I know that that has come up, the owners can opt to have their lots rented out when they're not using it. They don't have to. That's something they can opt in to do. And it's not like an Airbnb. You can't just, it's not really nearly, they're not open to do it themselves. It's through the development company and the, the office there. They rent out the spaces and then, I don't know the exact proportion or anything like that, but then the, the cost that's recovered based on renting out their site is then partitioned between the development company and the lot owner. Also, many of the rental guests, they've found, are friends and family of the owners. So the owners will come and stay for a couple of months. They'll have friends and family that maybe come visit them for a week at a time and they'll stay, you know, in a lot nearby or something like that. So they found that that's oftentimes what people come and rent that for. But people coming through and want to come rent one, they can probably come rent one unless it's an especially high occupancy time and there aren't any available. So a little bit about the Class A motor coaches and fifth-wheel trailers that will be allowed in the development. They are the ones that have length between thirty-four and forty-five feet with a maximum width of eight and a half feet plus slide-outs. They have fixed roofs as opposed to any pop-ups. They include self-contained shower and restroom facilities, so that's an important point, especially when we're considering the onsite separate restroom facilities. All of these include a full self-contained shower and restroom. Most of the time, they contain slide-out room additions. They can include things like entertainment center, bar, barbecue, television sink, ice maker. One of the restrictions is that they're no more than ten years old. And then also, as Randall mentioned, this is an underserved market, which is a pretty unique thing in travel and tourism, that the upper end of the market is underserved. But it is, and so that's why there's the demand for these resorts. So with that, I am happy to answer questions, if you have any.
Mr. Boarder?
Are the lots sold as fee simple?
I believe so, yes. They are just regular, real property.
You know.
That someone would pay property tax on.
I can see, I've seen that model before and I can see how that would work in the condominium-type documents. But you're right, there, there's a lot of modifications. documents, but you're right, there's a lot of modifications that have to be done.
Right, so each would have a separate APN, and they would be a separate legal parcel.
Does the coach house, is the coach house available to a rental guest, or is that treated as an owner's amenity only?
You know, I'm not positive on that. I think that that would probably be at the discretion of each individual owner, whether they want to include that as part of a rental.
And how do you handle boats?
I don't, that's not something we've addressed. You know, I don't know that a lot of these would be towing boats, because they would be towing a car, and they can only tow one thing. So unless they're planning on driving their boat up to the lake in their motor coach, I don't think that there's probably going to be a lot of boats onsite.
Okay.
But there is spare parking space on each lot.
Could you put the site plan back up?
Yeah.
One time, that's my last question, then I'll shut up.
Let me do that.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the maintenance area in the top right.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming there's probably going to be at least two eight-yard trash containers in there.
Right, there'll be large trash containers, as well as a small maintenance building.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
If you take the waste management 60,000-pound garbage truck and let him try and back in and out of your asphalt driveway, it's going to alligator like you would not believe, unless you put something a little more stout in there, and I don't see how the truck is necessarily going to get there, unless it comes in through the emergency exit.
So that is...
So I think that's a, I think, to me, that's a real concern.
And that is one of the items that we wanted to discuss, was the item regarding the emergency access. They would like to request that that access from Holly Way be available for waste management to use, if at all possible, on the same day as the adjacent neighborhood's garbage is collected, so that it would not add any additional traffic or wear and tear to Holly Way.
Well, it'd be a different truck.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, that's something that we'd have to work out, yeah.
But I, if you let a waste management truck drive through that neighborhood making those turns, it's going to be rutted in about a week, so...
You're saying on the site plan?
On that map, if I came in through the front gate, try to make all those left and right interns to get in there to lift up though.
So that's part of the motivation for the desire to access it from Holly Way, because the length of travel for the garbage truck will have to be designed appropriately for that loading.
Seen that also, is that it?
Yeah. Thank you.
I've got a couple things. If in their coach house, they have the wet bar, they have a restroom or whatever, how are you going to tie that in? Will it be hard-tied into the water and sewer system, or at the time they put the coach house, how's that going to be handled?
Yeah, that would be connected into the water infrastructure onsite, so as part of the building permit for that little coach house would be a connection to the water, and since this is master metered, we don't have to worry about it being a separate meter connection.
And my other question, if I have a unit, and can they leave that there when they're not onsite? If they take off for a couple weeks in their car, can they just leave their unit there while they're gone on their site?
I imagine so. I don't think that there's...
Or they could leave it there for five or six months, and then pull it off and, you know, come up and use it and just leave it, or is it normally taken in and out as they go?
It is normally taken in and out. I don't recall if there's something specifically in the draft CCNRs that addresses that.
Because that could open another thing that they could rent their unit, is there...
That's, that's not something that's allowed under the CCNRs. Yeah, that would be considered renting it themselves, yeah.
Commissioner Doors?
I have a few questions. The first one to clarify, Heather, you had said something, and I was writing some stuff down, I only caught part of it. It was about the open space onsite, and they had, it was something, I think you said they had nine acres, and they're, for something this size, they were required to have 11, and that seemed large. Can you clarify?
They actually have more than the 11 and a half. Nine acres is allocated to common area, and then, under the PUD section of the code, you can have up to 25% of that 30% can be private. So they actually exceed the 11 and a half with the, between the private and the nine acres of common.
Okay. So it used to be 277 lots, now we're looking for 227. But we're pretty far, even the average is pretty far underneath the lot size for, you know, separate APNs, which is 6,000 square feet. You're saying they're going to be 6,000 square feet, so, I mean, it's, we do have the right amount of open space, but I mean, you're getting, you know, 60% of our required lot sizes is what we're signing off on here, is making lot sizes 60% of the size that are normally required.
The PUD actually allows for reduced lot sizes, reduced lot dimensions and reduced square footage.
So then why is, just to clarify, why is it in the memo? I have all this stuff spread out here, but you had it in the memo as one of the things that there's specifically, or actually was in the discussion.
Right, because it's a PUD, we actually call out the things that they're asking to modify from what the standard is in the code.
And is the 3,800 approximately, is that pretty standard, as you're saying?
It is 6,000.
Right.
They're asking to modify it to reduce it to 3,275 would be the smallest. It is normal for a PUD to request a smaller lot size, yes.
Okay, that's what you're talking, okay, understood. For a little more clarification, you had said during your presentation that the coach house cannot be, I understand this correctly, cannot be occupied when the people are not onsite?
That's correct, and it's an accessory use to the RV only.
So then, the modification to Condition 49 specifically states that they can have stuff in there while they're offsite?
But it's not stuff, but they can't be there, in their living room.
Right, so that's...
They can't live in an accessory dwelling anyways, anytime, so what are we...
Heather Ferris, for the record, they could store their personal property in their coach house. So for example, if you had patio furniture that you wanted to store, you could store it in your coach house. You don't have to remove it. The way it was written previously, it was that you have to remove all personal property.
Thinking, you please clarify for me, I'm misunderstanding. What can they leave in, or what can they not leave in then? You're saying it can't be occupied, and I'm hearing that it can be with personal storage items. Can you clarify that?
It can't be occupied, but they can have personal property in it. So, for instance, that came up initially with this, is it said, "All personal property has to be removed," and it was, well, what if they have the coach house, they're probably going to have a couch, maybe some dishes, that sort of personal property that would be in the coach house, and then, like, if they have some patio furniture?
So when you say it can't be, you mean a car can't be parked in there? Is that specific, what do you mean can't be occupied with what? What are you trying to tell us?
People. Yeah.
But those accessory dwellings can't ever be occupied by people?
It can be, the original, Commissioner Doors, if you read the original, it said owners must vacate park, I had it highlighted, remove all personal property and being registered for 30 days. They're saying they can leave some personal property in it locked up, but it's personal property, it's not occupying it, it's personal property.
But when you're saying they can't be occupied, I'm just trying to figure out, at what point can they be occupied?
When they have their RV there, and they're using it with the RV. So that, at that point, they can, they can use it, like, say they're having, you know, neighbors or friends over, and they're enjoying their outdoor fire pit, and they're using that area as a seating area, or a wet bar area, or a powder bathroom area while they're outside, and while their motor coach is there. So if they pack up and leave, they're no longer occupying their site, and that accessory structure can't be used while they're not there, except for to store their personal property. Does that answer the question?
I guess. Just, I mean, yeah, it does, I'm just not sure the distinction was that important to make, because it...
Can I try another example?
I mean, you can, I think I understand, like, no one's going to show up and use the bathroom, they just put in the coach house when they're not, when they're not there. It just seemed like you were selling us something, I was trying to clarify, that in fact, due to Condition 49, you can have stuff in there, personal storage items, when there's no RV.
Correct, and the intent there is that, so there is not, it's no wiggle room in terms of someone is staying in that coach house and crashing on the couch.
But that would never be legally...
Right, that's correct.
Allowed, okay.
We just wanted to be doubly sure that's in here.
Doubly sure, that can be, all right. The trash removal, that's a big thing. I understand that the waste management access to that area is good, and I had that question as well. But what about cans? I mean, what kind of process, do you guys provide cans or can, I mean, I was looking at the typical street conceptual landscape plans, it doesn't look like there's anywhere to store cans up near the street for easy pickup, so I was wondering kind of what you guys, how does the trash get picked up at least once a day?
That hasn't been decided yet if there are going to be small cans placed, or if it's going to be up to each individual owner to provide their container. But they would be expected, since we're doing it at least once a day, it would be a small quantity that would be easily removed. So we don't anticipate that they would have to store or place a large garbage bin.
Okay. And a question for you, on all your other sites, that's how you do the garbage, is at least once daily pickup?
We pick up the trash twice a day, we have the people put it out at the curb, and to keep the birds from feeding or squirrels, so we have to pick it up twice a day. We wish it was only once, but once before noon and once about four o'clock.
Sure. But, I mean, that's doable if it's done regularly, that would just be my only concern, and I'm sure that would be residents' concerns, too.
It has to be.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Yeah, I have two questions, and they're going to seem completely, they're not even related. One is for the water for the lot landscaping, that the individuals, if they decide that they want to plant grass, or if they want to do anything like that, are they going to be hooking up to the master common area backflow system?
The entire system has appropriate backflow. So the entire eight-inch or 10-inch water for the hydrants has appropriate backflow for that use, and the potable system has appropriate backflow for the potable system. Now, are you talking about the individual landscape?
I'm talking about the individuals that can come in there and plant their tree, and put some, maybe grass around their fire pit or whatever. Who is going to be maintaining that if they're individual lots? Because they're not, like, zero lot line, so they're not, where, it's not like the association is maintaining the landscaping.
Right.
So it would be individuals maintaining their landscaping, but they're going to only be here 180 days.
My understanding is the individual lot owners are responsible for their maintenance. I believe in some cases, they can have that done as part of their HOA dues, and Randall might be able to speak to that a little bit more specifically, but...
And I know most irrigation, like my irrigation system, there's a backflow in the system to keep it from coming back. I think that's required.
But that's not what I'm asking. If I have a separate lot, and I am using water and sewer, that's the potable water and sewer, to run my kitchen washer dryer, blah, 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 right? And then you're telling me the fire hydrants and the irrigation for the common area is on a separate backflow system? But now, we're going to add a third layer of landscaping on individual lots. So will that individual lot pull up a hose there and be sprinkling, where they're going to be watering their pots, are they going to be putting things on drip? You know, I mean, these are, that's my question. Or are they going to just leave them natural with the original pavers? Because when we start, you know, adding additional landscaping, my big concern here is water. I'm looking at a lot of water on this. I'm also looking at also the idea of impervious surfaces, because by the time we put in pavers and driveways, and then we do hardscape everywhere, we're going to have some other different things. So I have that question.
So I appreciate that question, because we have assumed no more than 70% impervious cover for each lot, and that I believe is in the CCNRs, and that we had to have, you know, some number to go with in order to do our drainage calculations, because that does affect runoff. Additionally, we have then an assumption of an area for landscaping that we included in our water use calculation, so that's the water use that you see in the backup there with the growth management application, is the water use that includes the landscaping, both the site as a whole, and also the landscaping on each lot. So I don't know if that answers your question, or do you have...
When I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, okay, if somebody is approved for landscaping, who's going to maintain it the other days that they're not there, if they're there for the 180 days? That was my only concern. So maybe that's something should be additionally addressed in your HOA docs.
It absolutely will be, yes.
The other question I have, and I think this is more for staff, is this has the tourist designation, and I'd like to have some clarification, as the lots, the 277 lots before, were they actually paying like a hotel tax? And now are they going to be exempt, so?
So previously, the hotel tax would have been collected only if they were staying, I believe it was 28 days.
Or less.
Or less. So if it was 180 days or 30 days, they wouldn't be paying that tax.
That was a big discussion.
It would be the same in this instance as well, they would be responsible for paying that, as necessary.
That was a big discussion when it came up before, we were trying to figure out, because they could have done it for 30 days without even coming here, the 180 got the tax away, whatever, that was part of all that discussion.
Yeah, however, if a person comes and rents a site for a week, we should collect, the management should collect hotel motel tax on that, and make that, and make the... We do.
That's correct, and then in addition, since each of these are individually owned, each lot owner would be responsible for property tax on that lot as well.
Seeing none? Thank you. We'll open this for public comment at this time. If anyone from the public would like to come forward and make comment on this at this And if you state your name for the record, we'd appreciate that, and when it's green, you're good to go.
Hi, I'm Tammy Lubich, and I'm the property owner to the West, who's the one who keeps being a pain in the derriere to all the commissioners. I did want to make, I know that this has been approved, I see that they want to sell it now individually, which I really don't understand, because they got everything they wanted, they got their 180 days, which we didn't want. But on the caveat with that, the Board of Supervisors said, they got the 180-day stay, but they had to be gone for 30 days minimum. They could not come back. This changes that. Are they still gone for 30 days, or can they rent it right away and still be able to do that? Okay.
They will have to, we'll address the answers after.
I just want to make sure that that is understood, that they had to be gone 30 days minimum, because everybody says they're gone after 180 days, none of that was ever mentioned. My other concern is the putting greens and stuff like that. If they're grass and they're being watered, are they going to bring birds in? And that again goes to the airport, my safety, birds, airport, airplanes, water, that will bring in birds into the area, and I just don't think that's right. I know that no matter what I say, you guys are going to do what you do, but if it doesn't go the way I think it should go, I will appeal it again, just because I'm that way, I hate to tell you that. I just don't think, you know, we didn't get anywhere we wanted with the RV park, he got everything he wanted, and now he's adding another layer. It affects the city with taxes, it affects us with city driving, it affects us with a lot of things, and I don't know that all of that is being looked at. And tourist commercial, under that RV park is campground, is transient. It is not having someone own a property, and I don't think that it's right, it should be that way. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Other public comment on this item? Staff, would you like to address the 180-day confirming that?
Sure, so, Condition 49 in the staff report on page six is essentially the same condition that the board added during the appeal hearing on the SUP. And it states owner and/or guest stays may be no longer than 180 days continuously. Owners and/or guests must vacate the park, remove all personal property unless stored in the coach house, and be unregistered for a period of 30 days prior to being able to return. For the purpose of this requirement, a 180-day stay is considered to be continuous unless the tenant vacates the premises for a minimum of 30 days in aggregate during that period. So that is what was developed during the board meeting on the appeal hearing. With regard to the airport safety, the airport manager has reviewed...
With regard to the airport safety, the airport manager has reviewed this, and we've incorporated all of their conditions. Really, they're all the same conditions that were before you with the SUP. And then with regard to transient, the 180 days is still considered transient in our code. So...
A quick question to help clarify maybe for the putting green, whatever. Is this going to be more like a miniature golf course? Or is it going to be a putting green like you'd see at a golf course with holes in the grass, and you're putting in the green?
It's intended to be a putting green, not a miniature golf.
Having been involved with Eagle Valley Golf Course for 25 years, we had a few birds out there, but I mean, they don't flock into a putting green unless you're seeding it, or whatever, which normally you wouldn't do. And I don't know, you could do either natural grass, or there's some great artificial grasses with putting greens as well.
Yeah, I don't think that that has been determined at this time, but the landscaping is all intended to be fairly water conservation friendly, so we don't anticipate there's going to be any marshy areas that would attract birds.
Any more public comment? We'll bring it back for further discussion, then. Commissioner Tingle? If you state your name.
Karen Bowman.
Hit the button. If it's green, you're good to go. There you go.
Green, okay. Karen Bowman, I live on Arrowhead. If they're worried about the dump trucks going down Holly, why don't they just move the trash collection area to Hot Springs Road? And it would be easier access.
We'll answer your questions once. Is there any others, ma'am?
Nope, that's it.
Thanks for bringing that forward. We'll answer that once. Okay. The applicant want to respond to that?
The location in the rear of the property is, yeah, you know, we didn't want dumpster areas adjacent to the sales office. We tried to place it so that there is still a buffer from the residents on the west side, and that it's impacting as few lots as possible. And that's just kind of geometrically where it went.
And in essence, you're only going by four lots if you come in off there to get to it.
Right.
And that would be at the fronts of those lots as well. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Tingle?
Just for clarification's sake, item number 49, when it says owner and/or guest stays may be no longer than 180 days continuously, so does that mean the coach itself has to move out of that space? It's not that, hey, I'm staying 180 days. I know my kids want to come and stay 180 days, because we're going to Hawaii or Tahiti or something. So that coach has to move out of that spot?
Yes.
That's correct, and that's the intent of that second sentence there, is that they vacate, and if you feel that there needs to be clarifying language, we can modify it for further.
I would like it to specify that the coach itself must be moved out of that site for 30 days.
That was kind of where I was going, if you could leave the coach if you weren't there, so. Just the lot has to be vacant for 30 days, where the parking space needs to have nothing on it, basically.
No, the individual RV and the people residing in the RV would have to vacate the lot.
I think, Commissioner Doris, for the record, the language says, I mean, remove all personal property unless stored in the coach house, and be unregistered for a period of 30 days. So, I mean, the coach is personal property, right? So it's got to go.
Coach is part of the personal property, so. Now, we need to discuss the two, you mentioned the one, as far as we need to further discuss as far as the not using the emergency for garbage pickup. What was, there was another one you wanted to discuss?
Yes. The other item was item number 39, which requires signage notifying guests of the resort's proximity to the airport. The owner proposes instead of signage, that any rental guests would have to sign an acknowledgement when they sign in. And additionally, the owners would be subject to notification when they purchase the property. I believe it's close enough to the airport that that would be a standard disclosure anyway. But also, just in the offering for those properties, that they would have to sign and acknowledge the proximity to the airport and the airport-associated noise.
Go ahead, Heather.
I would defer to Ken Moen, the airport manager. He's here in the audience. He'd like to speak on that.
So you're stating that you wanted to where any, registering any guest would have to be notified, and before an owner bought a property, there would be written that he was notified, or they were?
That's correct.
Go ahead. Can I state your name for the record?
Good evening, Ken Moen, M-O-E-N, airport manager here at Kirsten City Airport. I do find that acceptable practice, to have the guest notification be signed. We asked also in our condition that the owners grant a voluntary easement for overflight. That way, they would be notified that there's aircraft maneuvering in that area. That area is directly to the west of the approach end of runway nine, and also the departure end of 27, so there is going to be air traffic over that on a routine basis. So what we don't want to do is get in a situation where we're in a quote-unquote "noise" environment, that we're getting calls about aircraft noise in that area.
So what you would like to see is on, when they sell one of these properties, there's an easement given to you that's been signed, that you're not responsible with, or whatever.
That's correct.
What's that? Go Heather?
So, Condition 42 addresses the aviation easement. Condition 45 addresses the signature at check-in, and I think that's it. So, and then Condition 39 is the signage. If you guys are amenable to deleting that, then we can do that.
If the airport's comfortable with it, and, I mean, that makes, I don't know why you need a sign-up that says airplanes, you can see them right across the way, so.
Commissioner Doris, for the record, I think the only concern that I have isn't a, well, there's two concerns. One is a safety issue, because the signage directly notifies of the low-flying aircraft, and I know that that would be, in a, I'm sure, in a contract when the people buy the property. I can't tell you one thing that I remember from the purchase contract of my home. So I'm not sure how well that's going to be read, and the low-flying is a safety issue. But also, I mean, we've seen stuff recently here come across in deceptive marketing practices for sale of properties. I'm not saying anyone here would engage in that. But I would say that it would probably be, I think it'd be best to have the sign. I mean, I don't, I don't think that, I would say, I would venture a guess that this would make it a little bit easier to sell, and not having signs up, and a little easier to market. But I think that, for our purposes, I'm not sure that's what we want for the citizens.
I think number 45 covers that. It says renters and owners when they check in, and they're all...
Right, they have to sign something.
They have to sign.
I'm not, I'm not saying they wouldn't, and they still have to. This, I'm saying, I personally, I think the signs are a good idea to be up for the two reasons that I listed.
So if you're coming in the door to the clubhouse or something, there's a sign that says there's an airport to your right, or...
When you're coming in the door, I mean...
There's a sign, is there any size?
Whatever 39 says, you know, the advising of potential for low-flying aircraft and associated noise. The noise, I'm not so concerned about in a signage. That would come with the territory, but I think a low-flying aircraft should, I think that should be signed up, so kids aren't out flying.
Was there any discussion on, is the size, whatever, of signs, whatever would be required, or anything?
No, at this point, it was left open for the applicant to work with the airport authority on the size, the location, the number of signs necessary. So if...
And if the airport authority isn't worried about it, is it something...
Well, I put it in as a condition in the original intent. My intent is that the owners of the property, in this case now, originally was the rental market, that there's notification, so that it doesn't become a noise complaint scenario.
And 42 does definitely execute a record aviation noise easement granting. That is covered.
Right, and that's a voluntary request. I believe the NRS doesn't, we can't require that. So if they're not going to submit to that voluntary request, I think more notification that the people have utilizing the facility, the better.
The conditions of them building this is they'll voluntarily do that.
42 is a requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they agree to it, that's voluntary. If they don't agree to it, then...
Well, no, the one they're questioning was the signage part of it is all.
Correct. I understand that, yeah. And if the commission feels that that's helpful as well, then, you know, I'm fine with that on that point. I don't want to quibble over a sign. I wanted to ensure that we have adequate notification for users, both ownership-wise and renters, that, hey, you're under a flight path, so don't call me.
And probably for management, it might not be a bad idea to have some kind of sign, you know? We're not asking you to put up a neon quoting by 40-foot sign.
We're not?
It should have some signage up that says, you've got low-flying aircraft.
And I think, I think that the, you know, the sign is more of a, are people even going to look at it? Is it going to be just kind of a useless maintenance thing that they have to take care of? Or are people actually going to read it?
A sign that says low-flying aircraft, that's, you know, somewhere on the building, somewhere they see, or whatever, coming in the entrance somewhere. I don't think it'll be a major maintenance.
Signs are relatively low maintenance.
Yeah, that's correct.
So what is the, as far as using garbage coming in the emergency exit? What are we going there?
So if...
Thank you, sir. I mean, that makes more sense, is, you know...
So would it be like, I'm unfamiliar with how it would work? Would the, I know at my, at my place of business, they have a key, Waste Management has a key to the dumpster. Would it be a situation like that? Would it be a Knox box, like the other gates we've talked about, or what kind of access would they have?
It could be any of those. You know, it could be a remote transponder, too. So I think the mechanism is not real important, because we can work that out.
I guess what I was wondering is, it will be locked?
Yeah, it absolutely will still be locked. No guests or owners will be able to access that. It will just be the fire department and waste management, as long as they're amenable to it.
As long as it stays secure, I don't have a problem, whether once, maybe twice. I don't know how often they'd have to come for garbage. Most maybe twice a week.
And the management of the resort itself, they have absolutely no interest in having owners or guests access out Holly Way. So they would be checking that gate regularly and making sure that there's no access.
I think I would certainly consider making that whole apron concrete. Because that truck's got to make the turn, and he's got to empty the dumpster, and they're not, they're going to kind of be side by side, but then he's going to have to back out to make the left turn to leave. No, but then he's going to have to back out to the intersection to make a left turn to leave. Well, if he does it at 3:00 in the morning, only people are going to complain once next. But, but I...
But again, he's going to have to back out, back into that side next to the one, and then head back out again.
If I was him, I'd just drive back straight through the intersection, make a left turn. Just back straight through, and then turn left.
Either way.
So whether that's concrete or a thicker asphalt section, it will be designed, yeah. It will absolutely be designed for that.
Again, I, I can see the location there, because it's a way where there's no one living around it, and it's back in that corner.
Someone, a question for someone more familiar with the flight path. Isn't that dumpster more directly underneath the flight path than if it was located closer to Hot Springs Road? So, I mean, that's kind of concerning for the birds, too. I mean, two big dumpsters, that's going to be a lot of trash produced right there. And that would be my hotspot for birds, is right by the trash. So, I mean, it's right underneath. I should have asked this, I missed an opportunity to ask this when Mr. Moen was here, but, I mean, I don't know. It might not be the safest place for it. And it may not matter at all. I'm not a bird nor an aviation expert.
I would hope that those dumpsters would be closed, except for when you're putting stuff in them. I know most places that's required, their lids are down.
Sure, and maybe even under some sort of like lean-to, or something.
I don't, I don't know that we need to engineer it, but we need to certainly answer the question as to whether or not we're going to let them use Holly Road.
Well, I don't have a difficulty using Holly Road, as long as it remains gated, closed, and only accessible by them and police, fire, whatever else needs it. So I don't know what the rest of it feel like. That makes far more sense than coming in off Hot Springs and trying to drive all the way through the project, so.
Heather, how do we put that in what we're looking at?
So we would be looking at modifying Condition 32. Access onto Holly Way shall be limited to emergency access and trash pickup only.
If I may, Lucia Maloney, Transportation Manager. If this access is going to be made available for trash pickup, Public Works would request that the apron be improved to allow full width, so that the trash truck can get fully in or out. When the heavy loads go over the unimproved shoulders, it tends to erode them more rapidly than otherwise. And I would hate to create a maintenance issue for the city based on this condition.
We need to make sure they get with whoever they need to, to make, okay? With Public Works, correct? Is that going to change the size of that intersection right there, or whatever?
I think we'd probably have to look at it, at the site improvements, but I think we can, we'll make sure the condition captures that.
You don't have a problem with that, as far as making sure that it's, I mean, improved enough to where they're...
Are you talking about improvements on Holly Way? Or just the transition between Holly Way into the site?
If the driveway or the connection to Holly Way is so narrow, that the trash truck, Waste Management is, needs to turn onto the shoulder, onto the right, on the edge of that turn. So it may be necessary that the apron be made wider than that entrance, which may ultimately fall within the right-of-way. So my request would be that we would look at it during the site improvement plan.
And I think I can probably answer this. The center lines line up. So the center line of that exit lines up with the center line of Holly Way. So it's not actually a turning motion to enter the site, it would be a straight. So I think hopefully that's...
Be a left turn, because he's coming in and turning left to go in.
On-site, right, on-site.
No, this would be on-site.
Yes, on-site. Correct. Yeah.
We just want to make sure that's coordinated, that it works for Public Works and you folks. Certainly, sir. Come forward and state your name.
Bill Bowman, I live on Arrowhead Drive. I just want clarification on some language. I'm thinking of a scenario, is it possible that a, somebody could buy two lots? I keep hearing you have to move the RV off of that space. If a person has two lots, what's to prevent them from moving that to their other lot, and just go back and forth in 180 days?
I believe it states that the RV has to leave the premises for 30 days.
I kept hearing the lot.
No, it's leave the premises for 30 days.
As long as it says that, that's great.
Yeah, they have to physically leave the premises for 30 days.
Okay. The other question I had, is there a reason why we can't put some kind of screening, at least on a portion of the north fence? Where I live, I'm looking down on it, and I would just not see a lot of that.
And that's currently will be chain-linked, is that...
That's correct, and that is as requested by Parks and Recreation, who owns the adjacent lot.
How far is the north fence from the closest residence?
I believe on that side, it's... I believe on that side, it's sixty feet.
Sixty feet, okay.
We are requiring a landscape buffer along that as well. And I can find that condition if you, if you're interested.
So a landscape buffer being something that'll.
Probably tree, shrubbery trees, would it, would that, some kind of buffer? Grass isn't going to do it.
No, it would be, it would be landscaping plants that would grow up. And that's really, that's on all of the sides, and that's in the interest of the developer as well, because they have a nice screen as well for the people that live there.
That's it.
Commissioner Doris, for the record, is it's.
You, you've already had your opportunities.
I just wanted to mention on the exit, on the emergency exit, they don't plow. I apologize, Tammy Lubich, and it didn't come up until the emergency exit thing. When they plow, they don't plow Holly Way for snow. Not that we get a lot, but every once in a while we do. They only plow for the school bus site, so it may be something you want to keep in mind for that emergency exit.
That input, man.
Quick question for staff. If I remember correctly, the city was going to work with them, or the, the applicant was going to work with the city approving landscaping stuff. To the gentleman's question, is that still going to be the case, that they have to get, you know, specific landscape stuff approved by the city? So it's not just, obviously it won't be grass, but something.
That's correct. So landscaping, a landscape plan would have to be provided with the site improvement permit, and staff would review that to ensure that it's consistent with not only the conditions of approval, but also the specific standards in Division Three of the development standards.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Reston.
Can we clarify on Item forty-nine, that the premises refers to the RV park and not to the individual lots?
Can we simply state vacates the RV park?
Yeah.
Instead of premises?
Just for clarification.
Okay.
This is more of a housekeeping thing. This is Old Hot Springs Road, not Hobo Hot Springs.
That's, that's correct. I don't think we refer to it as Hobo Hot Springs anywhere.
Yeah, you do. On your, all of your depictions of your clubhouse, it says Hobo Hot Springs.
Oh, does it? I apologize for that. No, I asked for the Old Hot Springs.
No, Hobo Hot Springs is not anywhere near this.
Any other discussion or comments, or a, a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Doris.
Let me try this. I, I'll move to recommend to the board of supervisors approval of the tentative planned unit development, TPUD nineteen dash one forty-two, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of, of approval contained in the staff report and modified by staff's memo of twenty twenty-five and the corrections that we've made this evening. Is that sufficient?
Does that include deletion of the duplicate conditions?
Correct.
Twenty-five and fifteen, and addition of trash pickup on Holly Way, correct?
Trash pickup on Holly Way. It does not remove the requirement for a sign.
And modification to forty-nine to delete premises and refer to it as the RV park.
There are several scrivener errors that we've made in this thing, but I, yes.
Right, right.
That's my motion.
Oh, and the, and that includes the apron.
Correct.
Notification as well.
Correct.
If required. Okay. We have a motion. We have a second.
Commissioner Doris, I second that.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Commissioner Tingle is opposed?
I just, for clarification's sake, I am opposing this, as I don't believe that they have sufficiently addressed the issues related to it being in the flight path of the airport. I don't think that the traffic study has been sufficient enough to address the impact to the people currently using Research Way and Hot Springs Road and College Parkway. I don't think there is a sufficient study that has been done about the RV pull-in, pull-out on Old Hot Springs Road. I walk that route weekly, and I just don't feel that there has been sufficient work done as far as access to that site. So that is the reason for, those are the reasons for my no vote.
So the motion carries six and one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we, we're going to take a short break before we continue for like five minutes. We will reconvene and recess as the Planning Commission and convene as the Growth Management Commission. Instead of a roll call, just would you note that everybody is present? And for anyone, we will include the comments from the last section with this section as well. So unless there's some new information to bring forward, again, the comments that were made in the last section will be included with this section. Public, I guess, under, public comment is the Growth Management Commission. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Growth Management Commission, including any matters that is not specifically included as an agenda item. Any public comment for this, at this time? Seeing none, we are skipping approval of minutes. We will address that at the next meeting, or before the next meeting. F four, GM one nine dash one four one, for possible action, discussion of possible action to consider request for growth management approval to allow for daily water usage above the fifteen thousand gallons per day for a tentative commercial plan unit development for a recreational vehicle resort facility on property zone tourist commercial TC located at fourteen hundred Old Hot Springs Road, APN zero zero eight dash one two three dash four oh. Heather?
Thank you. Heather Ferris, for the record, per Carson City Municipal Code, the Board of Supervisors determines annually the maximum daily water usage threshold for commercial and industrial permits. If a proposed use exceeds that amount, the applicant must apply for review and approval by the Growth Management Commission. The current established threshold is fifteen thousand gallons of water usage per day. The proposed use of two hundred and twenty-seven RV lots was discussed at length during the previous item for the Planning Commission. The tentative plan unit development is anticipating a daily water usage of approximately thirty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-three gallons. Development Engineering has reviewed the information submitted by the applicant and has no objection to the growth management request. Stephen Potte with Development Engineering is here and can discuss staff's review of the application in more detail.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Doris?
My commission, I think, is going to be, or my question's going to be for Mr. Potte, so go ahead. Well, but go ahead with your.
All I was going to add to that was that the thirty-three thousand gallons per day is approximately one point one percent of the available water that can be allocated.
Commissioner Doris, for the record, when, it, it says per project. Is there any sort of standards that, you know, fifteen thousand gallons a day per project? Is there any size standards, or is it just kind of a vague listing of any project of any size starts at fifteen grand, and then we come in here?
Yeah, so it would be any project of, of any size, they'd have to analyze what their estimated water usage is going to be.
Understood, thank you.
Commissioner Doris? Borders, I'm sorry. Commissioner Borders. I just had Commissioner Doris.
The other one. The only thing that concerned me that we heard tonight was this, the idea of individually watering your own lot. And the only avenue for me is, if I owned a lot and I wanted to put a drip system or a sprinkler in, was to either use the domestic water supply, which then has a sewer fee attached to it, and raises the price of water considerably for the project, or to find some way to tap into the, the higher, the fire line. And that doesn't seem to be very practical. So I have a real concern about, I, I think this number is fine, but if you've got two hundred and thirty lots and everybody's out there watering their grass, that's going to be a whole lot more water than I think we thought about. And that concerns me.
So the, the applicant did include landscaping on the individual lots in their estimate. And again, it is an estimate of what they anticipate will be done. And as far as metering, the, the project could install private meters if they, if they wanted to do that, to keep track if, if one lot is using more water than they thought was, was equitable. But yeah, there is only the one meter up at the, the street frontage for the entire project as far as the city's concerned.
And then in, so in that individual calculation, how much water do they consider using for landscaping other than the common area?
Well, Stephen's looking that up. If I could, is there a way to, to, I mean, can we just put a, a requirement in here that if they, for a certain amount of time are exceeding, say, thirty-five thousand gallons a day on average for a month straight, that we have to readdress this or something? Can we put a stipulation in there in case they are going over what they say pretty regularly?
Leap Llama Community Development. Perhaps the way to do that would be to have, just kind of trying to, trying to think on the fly here a little bit, but to have an annual review or have a one-year review of the water usage after the first year. I, I kind of don't like to do that, so I'm just, I'm kind of thinking out loud here.
We could do that at a percentage of buildout, because obviously until they start to get close to buildout, you're not going to see anywhere near the usage you think you're going to see.
But maybe it is that for the, you know, on an annual basis, reviewing it if the actual usage is more than a certain amount, that you would, it would go back to the Planning Commission for review. That's something you can consider in, in an application. So while he's looking that up, too, I would, I, I would just add that, I mean, the, in terms of the water usage, I, and to Commissioner Borders' question and the concern that people are watering individually, I think they've considered that. Sure, they're going to be watering individually, but if it was just an RV park, it would be, there would be landscaping as well that would be watered in. there would be landscaping as well that would be watered and use water. So I think we're probably looking at it on, on average over 200-plus lots, probably being about the same one way or another. You know, whether it's common area or a private citizen, or, you know, or a private owner there, maybe somebody accidentally leaves the hose on for a little longer than usual, but, but generally speaking, we're talking about water on landscaping about the same area either way.
Well, but in, but if I had an RV park, I'd have run a landscape line.
Right. Oh, no, no, no. Landscaping is watered with potable water in Carson City with, with exceptions.
But they don't pay sewer fees if they have a separate tap, right? If I have a landscape tap for my house, which I do...
Stephen Potte, for the record, and that is an option for this park, it's just a question of whether or not it's, makes sense to run the additional line throughout the whole park. So there's the cost analysis as to whether or not it makes sense to save on sewer and install the infrastructure or just pay...
Yeah, and that's not really our decision anyway, it's, it's the builders, but I was just, I wanted to make sure we had enough water, that we didn't know, we did not forget to consider that, and it sounded like it was an aha moment a little while ago. That's all I want to make sure of.
In terms of is there enough water, I'm going to repeat something I think Stephen will remember from the, from the last time. We've gone, so we have since, since in the last year, Public Works, working with me a little bit, have done this land use and water usage analysis together. They anticipated, before even knowing an RV park was coming in here, they made an assumption based on the zoning for commercial uses on this about how much water would be used, and the water for the RV park is within 3% of that, you're pretty much spot on on this big, huge property, so it's within what's anticipated in the city to, that we have enough water and will have enough water in the future for this project.
And you, in the past, I mean, your big water, you, like, what's a standard hotel or casino? I mean, don't they use massive amounts of water at times?
I'd have to look at some specific projects, I don't remember off the top of my head. And also to go back to earlier when we were asking about the, the numbers they used for the per space, they looked at other municipalities, the rates they use, as well as existing parks to see what the, the water demand actually was at those existing parks. So they took that all into account and discussed that in the water impact study.
Commissioner Preston?
So this new pool, because it didn't have a pool before, is this going to be a Hot Springs pool?
I don't know that I can speak to that, that might be a question for the applicant.
Can we call Rachel Kreider back up?
If she can share information with us, that'd be great.
All right. Rachel Kreider, Resource Concepts. To answer a couple of the questions that came up, first of all, with the Hot Springs, there's not any intent to have that be a Hot Springs pool. It's just going to be a traditional chlorinated pool and probably a hot tub adjacent to it as you would see at a typical RV park or a hotel. To address the concern over the irrigation, we do intend to run a separate irrigation line and meter for at least the common area irrigation. It's undecided yet on the individual lot irrigation, and that's something that we still need to, to parse out. I think that answers the question so far.
Other questions for staff or for the applicant? Seeing none. Public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for further discussion or a motion. Commissioner Doors?
The only thing that I would add, that I would add is some sort of review just to be safe on the 30, you know, if they're using 45,000 gallons a day, I don't, maybe there's no impact, I don't know, maybe it doesn't, it's not necessary. That's the only thought I had was a potential review on the 33,000 gallons of water per day.
Would that be triggered by the amount or would it be, I mean, they're not going to get anywhere near that till they start getting the first 100 or whatever.
And that's concerning too. If we just make it from a year from today, then yeah, they're not, they might not have even had anybody move in yet.
Or make it if they hit 35,000 or whatever, 40,000 gallons that is reviewed or something.
Is that possible to trigger it on, on the amount?
Lee, how would that be best set up to?
Yeah, I don't know what the numbers should be. I don't think you want...
Date review or just, maybe a date review's easier.
One year, yeah, maybe a date review is easier on the, on the amount, because I can't see us 20 years from now remembering to do this, but, no, I mean, it's...
We already triggered some things to the lot sold.
Right, right. So there's ongoing, no, no, there's ongoing review and...
I'm saying, we can trigger this to numbers of lots sold. You know, after the 100th lot is sold, the next January, I'll come look at the...
How do we keep track of the lots sold though?
Yeah, it'd be easier to just say a year or 18 months, whatever, from the start of two years that you...
After declaring control is released. Declaring control is released. Prior to declarant control being released, sorry, backwards.
We don't know when that happens.
Why don't we just make it two years from the time that the first lot is sold that they started or whatever, it'll be reviewed. I mean, that's simple for staff to keep track of, you just take a look at it in two years, you may make it another year or two if you need it after that.
Two, two years from final map approval, Commissioner S. Wynn's suggestion.
Commissioner S. Wynn, does that make sense? Two years from final map approval? Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, so here's the, it's not that we're not monitoring it, I mean, I think, I appreciate your, you know, interest in making sure the conditions are met and all, on all of those things, but I want you to think about too, what, what are you going to get out of that review? What's going to happen if X, then what?
Well, I mean, you can limit it, per what Borders was talking about, we could limit, you know, individual landscaping, right? You could, you could eliminate parts of the special use permit or...
For the, for the second phase or something.
For the second phase or something like that, we could, we could limit it at that.
Well, they're not, I don't see them approaching anywhere near that water use till they get to the second phase.
What happens if they, what if we do nothing and they're using 45,000 gallons a day? Nothing? Does anything happen? Does anyone notice?
I bet he does.
So that, so we're estimating about 1.1% of the available water being used. If they were at 60, then it'd go up to 2.2.
But I mean, literally, does, do, does anybody notice? Does anybody get notified and say, hey, these people are using more than their allotted amount of water by twice as much?
So each year at Growth Management, we do a presentation to this commission, and we look at the existing water production. So as homes are being built, as businesses use water, we look at how much water is actually going out to the city, and then also how many projects we have that are entitled. So you have the existing water use.
As a whole.
What you expect to be coming forward, and then based on that, you decide how many homes can be built.
Yeah, individually, a big hotel can come in, they, they provide the information, how many fixtures they have, what they do, they estimate their usage, they do that for building permits, they, even at a smaller scale, actually, they do that for building permits and their fees are based on that, but if they end up using more water than they estimated, sometimes more, some days less, no, nothing, no, that doesn't come to our attention on an individual basis. It's mixed, it's mixed in and averaged out.
Well, then I leave it up to the commission, what everyone thinks.
Which again is why, I don't want to get into this habit either of, oh, you're, because I, as I've said, this is actually an anticipated amount of water for a property this size, which also led me into the, to the code amendment, I've made a note to think about that. No, if it's, you could, a 100-acre industrial project gets that same $15,000 threshold as the one acre, whatever, commercial use as the rest, little restaurant, and it comes to you, there probably should be some, you know, I'm thinking now that we've, we've tied the land use and the water uses analysis, I think when we do the code update, I want to look at another way to do that. And which, with my point that I'm getting to is that this is an anticipated amount of water for a regular commercial use, given the size of this property.
Public Works has already said it's within 3% of, no matter what they had planned to go out there.
Yeah, I mean, my, my initial concern was just overuse, but it doesn't sound like that's really, it sounds like it'll be more trouble than it's worth checking up on it, and then also if we check up on this, you know, what's to stop the next door neighbors from grossly overusing their water and not being checked up on? So it's kind of, it sounds like it may be, it may be a moot point.
I tend to agree.
So then I'll make a motion?
Okay.
If it's time?
Do you have a comment?
We did public comment, I think. Commissioner Doors, for the record, I move to approve GM-19-141, subject to the conditions of approval outlined in the staff report.
We have a motion, we have a second. I'll second. Commissioner Satler will second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Commissioner Tingle is opposed, six to one.
Thank you.
Before recessing the Growth Management Commission, again, public comment, the public is invited at this time to comment on and/or and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Growth Management Commission, including any matters that is not specifically included on the agenda at this as an action item. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing none. We will recess as the Growth Management Commission and reconvene as the Planning Next item. G1, staff, for discussion only, presentation and discussion only regarding bills adopted by the 2019 legislative legislature regarding planning and community development issues. Lee?
Okay. Per the record, Lee Plomo, Community Development Director, I think I was at the last meeting and intended any way to give a legislative update on, on some bills related to the Community Development Department from the 19, I mean, from the 2019 legislative session. I have a brief staff report and attached to that is a kind of report on all of, all of the bills that were related to planning, building, business license, historic preservation, marijuana regulations, code enforcement, and redevelopment. And these were the ones that were adopted. We were tracking many more, just, it just related to, to a community development that didn't get passed. The city, you know, tracks hundreds every year that are related, that might be related to the city, many of which don't get passed. And so there's, there's three that I have up on the slide there that are really, maybe directly related to the Planning Commission and actually require some action that I'll bring up, and then after kind of reviewing these, you can, if you have any questions on any of the other ones, I'd be happy to answer them. One of the one, one bills that was adopted was AB 240 that requires regional planning coordination in northern Nevada, specifically with Washoe County, Carson City, Douglas County, Lyon County, and Story County. Haven't, you know, there's supposed to be a committee that's organized by the state looking for things, we haven't heard any follow-up on this. It's a growth, it's, it's, seems very related to growth management, which is a report we already do, the problem with that being our reports in May, so I suspect we'll kind of bring some portion of that report to this board towards the end of the year, that once we know what we need to include in the report to the state, we'll be bringing it to the Planning Commission to take some formal action on it, or a recommendation to the board for them to take some formal action on it, to, to move on to the, to the state as, as the required report. Any specific questions on that one? Second one I wanted to point out is not, no action required, but marijuana-related. There's, there was discussion about consumption lounges statewide. In other words, consumption lounge, right now the law is you can only, you can consume it, but only in your privacy of your own home, basically. And so it was pushed particularly from southern Nevada jurisdictions of, or, and some legislators to have a place where tourists can go consume marijuana. We, I think in Carson City, we've been pretty clear through the Planning Commission and Board and the ordinances we've adopted, that that's not a use we want to include. And the, this legislation affirmed that position, that that is not allowed under current state law, so, which there was some question of, so this confirms that statewide, you can't do that, but I would expect this to come up again in, at the legislature in two years. So we'll continue to monitor that and other marijuana-related regulations every, every session. Any questions on that? No. And the last one, I just want to point out, and I know, and I added it here specifically because I know Commissioner Tingle is really interested in affordable housing, and she's joined our housing, a little Affordable Workforce Housing Committee that we have with the city to help out with that, but it relates to, it allows this, a jurisdiction to adopt an ordinance to reduce permit fees to help with affordable housing. So basically it helps subsidize the cost of affordable housing. I, I'm not suggesting that this is something that we jump into and suggest that we do right away. In particular, I think, you know, looking at what our permit fees are, it's about, it's about, you know, nine to fif, depending on the house, nine to $15,000 in permit and water and sewer connection fees, which is, which is much less than the gap from a, how, from what market rate housing for a family and the affordability level, so it's going to take more than just $10,000 from the city and from the taxpayer, whoever some, somebody's going to end up paying for it one way or another to, to get that, but it's a tool in a toolbox now, so as we, as we go through affordable housing issues and look at how that might be addressed, this, this may be a tool in the toolbox in the future. I just got an email, there's a report from Truckee Meadows, which is Washoe County, they have an affordable housing strategy that just came out. I just downloaded the PDF late this afternoon, and I'll, I'll send that to you if, or if it's too, I think it's big enough to email, I'll send that out to everybody, so that might be some interesting information, just because that's very regional, and that's obviously a large portion of our northern Nevada population is in Washoe County. But that, that's all I had actually, specifically to report that I wanted to say, do you have any question, if there's any questions on any others, be happy to answer them. Try to.
Any questions or comments for, for staff? Seeing none. Thank you. Moving on, staff reports, directors' reports to the commission, future agenda items or...
Yeah, I get it, just a...
Also about the Ormsby House.
I'll get to that, I'll get to that. Just read the, yeah, Carson Now or Nevada appeal to have, they have the latest on the Ormsby House from us. Let's see, just to catch up on things, items that went to the Board of Supervisors in September that had previously been to the Planning Commission, actually had quite a number of items this time. Final subdivision map, and Hope can jump in to help me because I was actually on vacation for, for this meeting, so she got to handle all of this. The first meeting in September, the final subdivision meeting, final subdivision map for Schultz Ranch.
Is that the one that was continued, Hope?
That was the one, yeah. So this, this is, yeah...
I had a question on that. I noticed that they had mentioned that there would be no three stories on wherever any houses were, didn't we just approve one?
No, that's, that's a, that's different. So this is a, yeah, so there, there were, there's, there's two things that were going. There was, there was a final map at the first meeting, which is the previously approved tentative map, it's the last phase of the current Schultz Ranch, except for then, at the next meeting, there was a tentative map for an additional phase that was part of it previously, but then went away and came back, and that's the one where they did modify the, the approval to reduce the, to limit the, the number of stories on one of the, one of the borders, but...
But that wasn't the one we did.
But that was approved. But that was approved, that was what?
That wasn't the one we had done.
Yeah, so now I'm moving on to one. This is, the tentative map is the one that came to the Planning Commission recently and moved on to the Board, and that was one of the conditions modified. You want to go over, you want to go over?
We took five items to the Board of Supervisors. We had two abandonments. One was the abandonment over at Plateau, and they did approve that. You remember the Plateau subdivision? The other one was the abandonment at Minnesota, which was the Brewery Arts, and they, they recommended it. We, we modified your condition regarding the future, the, that if somebody were to do work in the PUE, they didn't have to bring the surface material back to what existed prior to the work. That language got changed slightly, just for clarification. Staff had recommended that clarification, but essentially consistent with your approval. In terms of tentative maps that went forward, the Little Lane, which was the three-story, you looked at the SUP on the three stories there, they recommended, subject to your recommendations, so that included the parking on Little Lane and utilizing the special street section. Based on the no votes on that item, they wanted a lot of information on the roads. They were very concerned that particularly Commissioner Wiggins had voted no. I had a lot of questions about what was he thinking, why'd he vote no? I, I remembered for you, so no worries. Okay, we also had a tentative map on the condominiums, and they recommended approval per your recommendation. And then the third was the Schultz Ranch Phase Five, and that was the one where they committed to the single story and so on and so forth, and they recommended, essentially subject to your recommendation. And so, I'm sorry, they approved that subject to your recommendation.
Do you want to go over some other, just really just to let you know, applications? And we, we continue to be busy. We do have the workshop, the Planning Commission workshop is tomorrow afternoon at 3 o'clock at the Community Development Offices to discuss Title Eight, Chapter 1805. And also just kind of related to that, we plan on taking a report to the Board of Supervisors on October 17th for some discussion about Title 18 updates to let them know our process of what we're doing. And I think I'll also get some feedback from them on areas of focus for us, which I think will be good, given that we need to focus in on some things rather than try to tackle everything. I'm realizing how big, if you haven't realized yet, how big it is. It's going to be a big job to go through all of Title 18. For next, for the next Planning Commission meeting, we have five special use permits, a tentative subdivision map and an abandonment. I won't go through them individually, just some, some highlights. Little, the, the tentative subdivision map is for 42 single-family attached lots on Emerson Drive on the south of the freeway, kind of in that, Del Taco vicinity, vicinity over there. And a little, another project on Little Lane now, on the south side of Little Lane, behind the post office apartment, apartments in a neighborhood business. So that's, it requires a special use permit. So those, those items, we'll have another full agenda at the Planning Commission next month. Related development items not coming to the Planning Commission. Two more fin, final subdivision maps are coming in. One for Arbor Villas, their, their second phase, that's, that's on the north side of Little Lane. So that's record, the final map records the lots, that just goes to the Board of Supervisors as well as a final map for, it's at the airport, so I assume that's for some, that's for some hangers. We also do major project reviews twice a month for, for, for sometime, it's required for some things like apartments in multifamily zoning, but also as a courtesy for other things. And that's, that's one at which, that's on October 1st, and that's what you've read is the, the proposal at the Ormsby House was going to be, we're reviewing that now and we'll provide, meeting with them and providing comments to them next Tuesday. But there's three others as well. We have one for outside storage, possible youth camp up Highway 50 West and Jackson's food store, gas station. So we have a lot, keeping busy, have a lot going on.
Excuse me. When do you think we'll see Ormsby House?
Not, I'm not sure you will see Ormsby House. I mean, I think we're looking, I think we're looking at what the uses are if, you know, it, it, it sounds like they want to move quick, so if there's any, any special use permits or text amendments or whatever might be required, I think they're going to want to do it pretty quick from what we've heard so far.
And our Chick-fil-A is going in down there? Is that what they're working on or?
The permits are issued for the, are the permits out for the Chick-fil-A? I know that, I think, I think the permits are out. They're doing the site improvement work for that still, and that's still, that's still in play though for them, yeah.
Mr. Preston?
The youth camp, is that on the acreage for the state in Nevada?
No, youth camp, it's private property up near Horse Creek Ranch. It's a part of Schultz family up there. Yeah.
Mr. Tingle?
So the, the units on Emerson or off of Emerson are, is that north of the Jehovah Witness?
Yes.
So in front, west of the Power substation?
Yes.
You guys taking away all my dog walking area. Come on!
Would it, and, and I guess this is more for, for us than you all, but would it make sense for us to get a presentation from the school board on what they're doing, what they, what they think? Well, not necessarily the school board, but somebody from the school about what they're thinking about with that, their new property? It may be a little premature, but I...
I think it's probably premature right now, but that's, yeah, I, I, I saw that and got it on our radar to, to get any information the city may have about what might be involved.
That's come from the committee recommending, right? Yeah.
And I, I saw it last week with the, at the bond review. It's, it's an interesting presentation. I think it might answer some questions that others of us have.
Okay. So if you, yeah, if you think, if you want to talk to them and have them do that, I'd be happy to, happy to schedule it. That's, because I, I was out of town and missed that meeting.
Well, it's not, it's not something that I'd like to sit here at 9 o'clock to listen to, but it, if there's some time when we could do it, it might be interesting. Maybe we do it at a workshop.
Okay.
Anything else? I'd like to thank Commissioner Tingle for representing us. Thank you on the committee for the affordable housing, and we appreciate that. Appreciate it very much. Okay. Any other commissioner reports? Public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matters that are not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Seeing no public comment, take a motion for adjournment. We will be, we will be adjourned. Thank you.